Do you have, uh, Phyllis? You got the New Teacher Project thing uploaded?
Yes.
The one used to go to Word and one is withrow virtual. That was the car chase for police?
Yeah. I mean, we know it wasn't that. We don't, we can say our students.
Well, we also had two teachers, two teachers.
Why don't you mention, why don't you put them all together? Uh, Melanie will say something. No, don't go.
My chest kinda retarded.
That's what's still related to the treasurer's report, but not as I do.
Superintendent?
Okay, alright.
She'll have to follow up with the treasurer. Never. I call to order the December 8th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience and here on the floor to please silence your cellphones and other electronic devices. And now, uh, Member Bates will lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I must say that pledge always sounds best when there's student voices added to it. Thank you very much.
Mine too.
I need a motion, uh, for a treasurer pro tem.
I move that Board Member Alex Coons serve as treasurer pro tem.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Manera, thank you. And our new treasurer pro tem will now call the roll.
I will. Mrs. Bates?
Present.
And I.
We have to do the, for the pro tem first. We have to do the pro tem first, and then we'll do the present. So this is all I have.
Okay. Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye.
And roll call for attendance, Mrs. Bates?
Yes, uh, if I, yeah, we're ready for a roll call for attendance.
Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
I am present.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Coons?
Here.
Mr. Manera?
Here.
Mr. Nelms?
Uh, here.
President Bolton?
Here, thank you very much.
I also need to entertain a motion to make a change to the agenda, an addition to the agenda, for a third presentation. Uh, any member would like to make that motion, we have a second, and then we have to actually vote on a change to the agenda. Do I hear a motion for addition to the agenda?
I move that we, uh, include a presentation on HR structure and capacity recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please, for the change in the agenda.
Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons? Aye. Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye, thank you. And we're now at the port of our, uh, meeting for old business. I need a motion to approve the minutes from, and I'll go through the list. Special meeting November 3rd, 2014. Regular meeting November 3rd, 2014. Emergency special meeting November 4th, 2014. Emergency special meeting November 5th, 2014. Special public meeting November 5th, 2014. Special meeting November 11th, uh, for 2014. Special meeting November 17th, 2014. Regular meeting November 17th, 2014. Special meeting November 19th, 2014. And special meeting November 21st. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Uh, do board members have any questions about the December 3rd, 2014 Committee of the Whole Report? Hearing none, we need a voice vote to accept the committee report as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Tonight, as we start new business, we have three really wonderful presentations, two of which were delayed as a result of the remarkable November snowstorm, uh, if you'll recall. And we're glad that both, uh, of the presenters and the folks involved with all of this have been able to return, uh, tonight. And we will start with the first, uh, one, which is an update on the artwork of the North Avondale Montessori School, presented by Lillian Carter, visual arts teacher for the, for the school. And this was in part, and she'll be able to explain some of this, this was really when we passed the, uh, resolution commemorating the 30th anniversary of the Year of the Child and what have you. So, we have our wonderful teacher, Lillian Carter, here, and more particularly, we have grownups holding what the kids did. So, please, welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Education members, President Eve Bolton, and Superintendent Ronan. On behalf of the students of North Avondale Montessori School, we are very excited to be here this evening to recognize the celebration, the 35th anniversary of the International Year of the Child, which is commemorated around the world. As you just mentioned, we were originally scheduled to be here at your November Board Meeting. But I would like to acknowledge, um, Board Member Bolton for her caring heart with providing the second opportunity for my students and district representatives, along with Julie Doppler, who attended our in-school celebration. On a very special note, I'm very grateful that you accepted my request for showcasing our art and the resolution I submitted, which you crafted the words for implementation, to fulfill the vision and the mission and commitment of our district for the rights of children. An extra highlight, our mayor, John Cranley, issued a proclamation aligned with your resolution. So it appears that we're all on the same page. Here's the resolution. Proclamation from the mayor. As we present our mural, it reflects American and international history, civil and human rights, along with the social justice lesson. Each student examined the actual document with the original 10 principles of the Universal Declaration of the Rights of the Child, and created picture illustrations. And as we all know, we study language arts, and however, there are visual arts or visual literacy, which enhances higher-level thinking and skills, or in the words of our district, Vision I-5. We know a picture is worth a thousand words. So at this time, our narrator, Hannah Kirchner, will provide an overview regarding this learning through the arts experience, and then each student artist will follow with identifying their number, there are 10 principles, and they will give their interpretations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Superintendent Ronan.
And you might want to lower the mic just a little bit for, for, there you go. Alright, did it right, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Good for you.
The art apprentices of North Avondale Montessori School are here tonight to celebrate the 35th anniversary of the International Year of the Child. Before we begin, our, I would like to share with you a few brief facts about the purpose of this International Day of Rega-Nation, which protects the rights of children. Historically, during antiquity, people did not give special protection to children. During the Middle Ages, children were considered as small adults. Then hundreds of years later, during modern times, the League of Nations, later to become the United Nations, developed special committees to study and adopt children protection laws and charters such as the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the declarations of the Right of the Child. The spirit of these documents was embodied in 1979, when the United Nations declared the International Year of the Child. This proclamation was intended to draw special attention to the many problems that affected children around the world, such as malnutrition and the lack of the right of privilege to an education. At this time, each art apprentice will read a summarized version of the Declaration of Rights of Children for, within our mailroom. At this time, the art apprentice would like to unveil our banner, honoring the rights of children. Our banner is designed to honor the 10 guiding principles which define the rights of children.
Hi, my name is Mia Romehahn, and I represent Principal One. We are all the children of the world. No matter who our parents are, where we live, or what we believe in, treat us as equals. We deserve the best the world has to give.
Hi, I'm Caleb Bryant. Protect us so that we may grow in freedom and with dignity. I did Principal Two.
Oh, my name is Lauren Derron, and I did Principal Number Three. Let us each be given a name and have a land to call our own.
Hi, my name is Elamine Bajal. I did Principal Four. Keep us warm and sheltered, give us food to eat and place to play. If we're sick, nurse and comfort us.
Hi, my name is Maya Holtzman. I represent Principal Five. If we are handicapped, embody our mind, treasure us even more and meet our special needs.
I'm Megan Holtzman, and I did Principal Six. Let us grow up in a family. If we cannot be cared for by our own family, take us in and love us just the same.
Hi, my name is Shania Barnett. I represent Principal Seven. Teach us well so that we may lead happy and useful lives, but let us play so that we may also teach ourselves.
Hello, my name is Sabine Verhaak. I'm in the fifth grade, and I'm representing Principal Eight. In times of trouble, help us among the first. The future of the world depends on us.
I'm Warner Sancker, and I am representing Principal Nine. Protect us from cruelty and those who would use us badly.
My name is Diana Hutchinson, and I represent Principal Number Ten. Raise us with tolerance, freedom, and love. As we grow up, we too will promote peace and understanding throughout the world.
Now, board members, we will bring the mural back to be on display in the outside foyer there. So thank you very much. Don't leave yet, because I'm sure that, uh, board members will have some comments and perhaps some questions, not only for you, but also our very distinguished guests who are our students. And I will take a personal, uh, privilege and say, I didn't, I'm not the one that made it possible. I would have been thrown out, for sure, if we hadn't worked out a second time for your students and you to come. This is just, the board wants to hear student voices, more and more, and this is just fabulous. So, we appreciate it greatly, but our thanks to you, then, to all of you. To all of us. Uh, questions and comments, board members? Mr. Coons?
I am very impressed by you guys with the courage that it takes to get up here and speak to a group of people late at night that just want to get home, and here we are, engaged in these beautiful faces. I love the drawings. Um, special kudos to the gentleman in the suit. You're looking sharp, man.
Mr. Nelms?
Ditto.
Other comments, questions? Mrs. Hoffman?
Yeah, I'm curious if anyone has, any of the kids want to tell us something that they learned or took away from this project? This is so beautiful to hear your own words and see your own drawings. I'd just love to hear from you.
I learned that children are important and that they're the future of our world, and that they'll soon be like all of us, and that they'll soon be as important as each of us are. I learned, I learned that, um, adults have to be, have to be able to teach the kids something so they can grow up to become more advanced and, um, teach the other little kids how to make the world more complex.
Very nice. Hoppadada, hoppadada. You. Thank you. I'd like to also thank our parents. Parents and family members here, still stand, what, the families and parents and what have you, the grownups that are sharing that. Is that wonderful? Alright. Again, we deeply appreciate it and actually are deeply moved by the message and, uh, by the students and their teachers for making all of this possible. And again, thank you, parents and family members, for entrusting us with your children. Great job. And now our, uh, second presentation this evening, uh, is by Principal Shawna McDowell, who will now update us on, uh, their work at Pleasant Hill Academy, and especially update us, if you will, on this remarkable, uh, Pleasant Hill Academy Awards banquet that was certainly the talk of, uh, my neighborhood, and a remarkable achievement regarding the number of folks that you, uh, brought to that, uh, that, that table, that banquet table, if you will. So, welcome, Principal McDowell.
Thank you. Um, it's an honor to be here. We'd like to thank the board for having us, along with our superintendent, Mary Ronan, the assistant superintendents over to the left, and I saw the deputy superintendent. I'm sure she'll be back.
Yes.
So, um, we did, we wanted to celebrate our students and their families, just for the dedication that they, um, shared with us last year as a school, especially around the OAA. Um, I brought two remarkable, remarkable young ladies here. I can tell you, if this is the hands that we're going to be left in in 20, 30, 40 years, we will be in great hands. Um, they wrote a poem that they presented at the annuals award banquet. We had 93 of our students that passed, we'll just quickly, it's a quick, quick presentation, but we had 93 of our students that passed the OAA. Um, Ms. Rucker is one of our fourth-grade teachers. Um, she had a passage rate of 85% um, last year, and that is the highest that Pleasant Hill has had. So, that is wonderful. Third grade, we had 76%. Um, because of the alternate assessments, it would have been 81% if we had have gotten two, but we didn't, that's okay. So, we celebrated our students. All of our students received an award. I also, um, gave, gave all of our grades three through six teachers, they received an award as well. And they turned around, and they also gave me an award. So, um, it was just a wonderful night. We had over 200 students and parents at this banquet. Um, it was a beautiful banquet, you'll see some pictures. But along with our progress, our value added, we had a C in our overall value added, but we had an A in our lowest 20%, and we had a B with our students with disabilities. And if anyone knows our building, we have, um, over 20% of our students that fall into that category. So, this is just a quick slide, I'm not going to read through it, but we want to celebrate our students, getting less students in the basic and limited, and more in the proficient, accelerated, and advanced. And as we know, yes, we are evolving. And these are just some of our clubs. We also have our LSDMC chair here with us, Mr. Wells. Um, College Hill Presbyterian, um, helped to sponsor this night, um, financially, so we wanted to make sure that we recognized them. We also have our resource coordinator, Mr. Walker, he is here with us as well. So, we just wanted to do something to give back to our parents and our students for their sacrifice, their hard work, their dedication, and their success. And if our Pleasant Hill family would stand up.
Alright.
So I'm gonna let, um, two of our students, Markeia Johnson and Destiny Map, they're just going to, um, cite their poem that they wrote themselves for the banquet.
Hi, my name is Destiny Map.
And my name is Markeia Johnson.
And this is a poem about the choices we choose. Throughout the problems that we all face, there's still a decision that we can make. Even though there's things at home that make us run a roar, there's still an opportunity for us to soar. Hard work and accomplishment takes time, but all you need to succeed is the power of the mind. Accomplishment is sometimes hard to do, but all you need is to be focused on you. For all our success, we would like to thank all teachers that helped us be the best. It wasn't just hard for us, it was hard for them too, but they're still here making it through. Our teachers that we love, our teachers that we will fight for, give them a hand for working so hard. Thank you.
Nope, yeah, don't go too far.
And those are just some pictures from our banquet, so you can see, it was a packed event. Um, there wasn't an empty seat, so we just had a marvelous night. Thank you.
Well, don't go too far. I'm sure we have some comments and some questions, so join us up here, a little bit farther, yeah. I know that part of the terribly impressive piece of this was the remarkable family engagement, uh, and, and also remembering to salute our students for their, for their outstanding achievements. So, uh, it's just a very impressive thing, as we care about engagement as much as, uh, we do, that you guys are finding a way to, to make that happen in great, great numbers. Uh, so appreciate that, and I know some board members, Mr. Manera?
Well, again, I just want to say that what, that's amazing, but again, I want to highlight how important it is to embrace our community learning centers, uh, in all of our neighborhoods. I mean, what a great show of leadership from our resource coordinators, to our LSDMC, to our teachers, and especially for the students who are showing so much servant leadership themselves, turning around and saying thank you to our teachers. And, you know, there, we sometimes forget how much and how special it is just to receive a thank you. So, you're way ahead of the game thanking your teachers, and you continue to do that, you're gonna be very successful in life.
Other board comments or questions? Mr. Coons?
Uh, just to say that one of the best gifts you can give in life is an expression of gratitude and appreciation, and we're very proud to see that happening at Pleasant Hill, so keep up the good work.
I'd like to ditto, to ditto that, um, how many people write poems to their teachers? I think that is so awesome, that you did that, which is a true testament to the work that you all are doing, um, for our kids. And also, I see, um, um, our principal, um, Ms. McDowell, I would agree with you, these young ladies have such awesome self-esteem, it's written all over them, so you guys are doing something really, really good. Keep up the good work.
Other comments from some of our guests, if you'd like to make a few comments? Feel free. Well, we do appreciate your leadership, uh, in the community and in the school, and most of, especially to, uh, help with the raising and the care for our wonderful students. And thank you for reaching out to the community, and thank to the community for responding in such great numbers. Thank you, Principal McDowell.
Thank you.
And, and now, um, we will go to our third presentation, that this evening, uh, we've adjusted the agenda legally, so we're allowed to do that. And we know that the, uh, superintendent will do the introductions as need be for this presentation. I know this is a long partnership, dates back many years, it's, uh, helped and funded, if you will, by our business community as well, and, and so we, we look forward to hearing the public report. Superintendent?
Yes, we have two special guests here tonight, joining us for the New Teacher Project, and they have been working with us since last year. And as you know, we had almost 200 teachers retire last year, we anticipate another 200 teachers this year, and it's crucial that we're able to hire the best and the brightest, have procedures, have screening tools, and the New Teacher Project has really provided that. Megan's, uh, Megan Algaretti has been on the ground here, working with us, and Joe Hetler has joined us today to really give their midterm report this year, to make sure that we're ready to hire the 200 new teachers that we're going to need to staff our schools for next year. So, Joe, thank you so much for coming in, and thank you for all your help last year to making sure that our schools were fully staffed, and thank you, um, for what you're going to do for us in the future. And I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Ronan. Board members, thank you for having us. I will say, I think we got the short end of the stick going last after those first two presentations, so, uh, we will try to, uh, to, yeah, stand up to that. Um, as Superintendent Ronan said, uh, we are with the New Teacher Project, which is a national organization that supports school districts and states in making sure that all of our students have an effective teacher in front of them every day. And so, we've been working with Cincinnati since May. We were brought in, and have been providing some support to the HR team over the last few months, and it's been a real pleasure to work with that team, and we've really enjoyed the experience. Um, a little while back, Superintendent Ronan asked us to come up with A little while back, Superintendent Ronan asked us to come up with some recommendations and thoughts as to how to ensure that the work, the good work that's happening in Cincinnati around teacher hiring can continue to happen into the future in a sustainable way, considering the challenges that any urban district faces in trying to acquire great talent. So, with that being said, is there a, you have the clicker. Perfect. There we go. All right, so we have a presentation today we're going to go through that's going to basically outline what our two recommendations are. And again, the way that we've gotten to these recommendations is based on, for as far, experience working in other districts, seeing what works and what doesn't work. Also, having regular conversations with many of the staff members, as well as Superintendent Ronan within the district, to kind of gather, to learn more about the processes that they're working on and to learn about the way that they go about bringing in great teachers. And we've also done our own analysis, looking at the available data and determining where there may be opportunities to continue to improve. And so, our two recommendations, the first is around teacher evaluation. We are recommending that the evaluation department be within HR. Teacher evaluation is closely linked with the work that HR does. HR will bring in great talent, but then, once they get in, how are we making sure they're getting the feedback that they need to continue to improve and feel supported in the district, which is obviously the key of a good evaluation tool. So, connecting those two is something we've seen across the country as an effective way to structure districts' HR. And then, second is thinking about the additional capacity that we believe is needed within HR to continue the sustainable improvement that all of us want to see. The team is doing a really great job. We've been very impressed, but the amount of work that goes into recruitment, selection, staffing and data, which is something that Megan's going to talk about in a moment, is quite large, and so we think that there's actually a need for several more positions and a little bit more capacity. So, with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Megan.
Thanks, Joe. So, the first recommendation, as Joe mentioned, moving teacher evaluation into the HR department. We really see this as a supporting an effective human capital management system. So, the work that you do with teacher evaluation is important for HR department to make decisions about the staff that you have and to inform things like recruitment and selection. So, it really works hand in hand, moving teacher evaluation into HR. The second recommendation is around adding additional capacity to the HR department. We've found four critical areas that we see needed capacity: recruitment, selection, staffing and data and systems. I think we've already talked a little bit about this in the past presentations we've made, but recruitment, really a focus on bringing in more diverse candidates as well as more candidates. We know we're going to have a need for more candidates in this coming year, so someone to really focus on that work and own that work, as well as launching an internet recruitment strategy. That's something that hasn't been done that much in the past and will be an important focus moving forward in order to really expand our base of applicants and make sure we're getting the number of applicants and the quality of applicants and the type of applicants that we want. As far as selection, we have been designing a selection model that aligns to the new teacher evaluation rubric, and that'll be something that needs to be managed and implemented this year. So, again, another key focus, very pressing coming up in, beginning in January, but really someone to own the selection work, make sure that model is functioning appropriately and that we have screeners that are, they're doing their work well to screen the applications. The third key focus is staffing. So, we learned last year, we had a good year last year staffing the schools and being 100% staff first day of school. We hope to do that again. And in order to really support that and also continue a focus on early hiring, because we know applicants who apply earlier are usually your more effective applicants, we want to make sure we are ready to have those people move through the hiring process as efficiently as possible. So, we need staffing support to make sure that there's relationships with schools to give principals the information they need, the applicants they need, to make the right hires for them. Finally, data and systems. So, we know that you guys pride yourselves on being a data-driven district, and we think that that work obviously should continue in the HR department, but there is definitely a further need for collecting data, making sure we're collecting all the data we need around our recruitment efforts, our selection efforts, in order to understand what decisions we need to make, in order to create the reports we know that can drive the work and make sure we're making the right allocations of funds, that to make sure that we are indeed hiring effective teachers and to also make sense of the teacher evaluation data and making sure that we're monitoring that system as well. So, those are the four main areas we see that need additional capacity. And finally, just wanted to end on that we're here to support all of this work. We realize that this is a lot of changes and different ideas, and we're here to facilitate further conversations or help recruit and hire for new positions. And we do see this as very important, obviously, our contract's up in June, and we want to make sure that we are a part of this work for you guys to make sure it's seamless, to take the plans we have created already and hand those off to the people who will own that work. So, any questions?
Thank you. Questions and comments by board members? Mrs. Hoffman, if you'll get us started.
I don't even need to do anything. She's like, this is, this often. Yeah, so, thank you. I mean, I want to echo Superintendent Ronan's thank you. I think we just all, as a board, we know that the single biggest in-school factor that contributes to student growth is the teacher. And so, getting this piece right is fundamental to transforming our district. We can do lots of other things, but nothing will impact our kids as much as this piece. And so, this is critical to us doing it right. And so, yes, so your work in pinpointing for us where we need additional capacity, I think is just a smart way for us to figure out how do we use our limited budget in order to make the biggest impact on our kids. So, I think that part is very exciting. I think the other part that is exciting throughout this is that is teacher evaluation and teacher hiring being so seamless so that we are making sure we're hiring people on the model we're evaluating them on, and then, we're taking that data and using it to each year refine who we're hiring. So, I'm really excited to see kind of how that piece also transforms who we're bringing in and making sure that we're supporting the people we're bringing in so that they build their career in CPS.
Other board member comments or questions or views, points of clarification?
Not really points of clarification, but I do want to thank you for the immense amount of time that you've spent here with our district as well as our administration, who you guys have probably become really good friends, you've spent so much time together. But I do have to echo Board Member Hoffman and the importance of recruiting and hiring and retaining our best talent. And I think you've given us a nice little blueprint for us to begin to work there, and I think even this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about some action steps. So, thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Koons?
Again, just to say thank you. Often the times, it's helpful to have outside people come in because, you know, people see each other differently than they see themselves, I guess is the best way to put it. So, we appreciate your perspective, and I think these are some helpful recommendations.
I'd just like to echo what everyone else has said. I also want to thank staff, the administration that has been receptive and confident enough to have this, you know, third eye, if you will, look and see and figure out how we can do things. Appreciate especially Pat Neil Miller and those folks in HR that have been receptive to this, open to this, and more particularly, everybody in this district is focused on the one thing that we all know makes the greatest difference. It's already been mentioned, and that is the best possible teacher in every single classroom. And it's great, and we appreciate the superintendent finding community support to help finance this, because we can thank you all you want, but people help pay to have you here, and we appreciate the fact that they want to partner with us to continue to make our district a district of destination, and that is what our future must be. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks to the HR folks and all those folks that took the time. Thank you to the teachers' union that's been receptive to this effort. It takes big people to embrace this kind of change and also this kind of evaluation. So, thank you. Appreciate it. We are now at the point of our meeting to have announcements and kudos and retirements, and Mr. Nelmes, would you please present the kudos?
Yes, I will, Madam President. Myself and Board Member Hoffman have at least two formal kudos, and anything that follows after that, I'm not in charge of. But kudos to see David Alice, a Woodward alumni, alumnus who graduated in 1969 and was one of 13 recipients to receive a $3 million breakthrough prize. Mr. Allison, you here tonight? Okay, because I could use a dollar. Mr. Alice is a laboratory scientist who biological discoveries in human genetics has opened paths to treatment for the most difficult cancers, especially in children, and including the deadly tumor affecting Lauryn Hill. Mr. Alice's research has received numerous awards. In January, he received a $500,000 Japan Prize given for scientific advancement that further peace and prosperity. Kudos to Mr. Allison for his research in cancer.
Thank you, Mr. Nelmes.
All right, yeah, kudos to Hughes STEM, slated to soon become a national model to help more students prepare for and graduate from college. University of Cincinnati will be partnering with the school to offer a new summer bridge program to the students. The UC program will provide year-round support in addition to the summer program to encourage Hughes students' interest in and readiness for STEM careers. And I'll just add to that, I had the privilege of being over at Hughes last week on a tour with their principal and three of their students. It is an incredible place. If anybody in our community who hasn't been to, over to Hughes lately, I encourage you to go take a tour and see what's happening there, and I challenge you to not leave inspired. It's really, really impressive, so they deserve all the national attention they're getting right now.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Any other kudos? Mrs. Bates, would you please present your portion of the announcements?
Yes. First of all, since we last met, we've lost several members of our CPS community, students and staff members, and I would like to acknowledge those losses with a moment of silence. Thank you. And I would also like to announce several retirements. Thomas F. Miller is retiring as principal of the Virtual High School. Ella Gordon Spicer and Glenda McPherson, civil service personnel, are also retiring, and we want to congratulate them and wish them well and thank them for their service.
Thank you very much. And now, we are at the portion of the meeting to hear from the public.
President Bolton, I'm sorry, if I can backtrack a little bit. I wanted to give a little bit more insight to some of the staff losses that Board Member Bates mentioned. First, Sheldon Doyle. Sheldon Doyle was 54, formerly of Kansas City, Missouri, currently of Florence, Kentucky, and was the music director for Woodward High School. Taretha Posey, it wasn't until 1988 that she found a true passion as an instructor assistant for CPS. She spent the majority of her IA career at Hartwell. Then there's Tom Armstrong, who's a retired principal at Porter and Dater Junior High School. And lastly, Gary L. Harp, who also is retired, was a sixth-grade teacher at Cove Dell, where he received the Cincinnati Distinguished Teacher of the Year Award. I thought it was warranted to mention a little background for those four special people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our first speaker tonight is Gerda Bronheim, and she's here to talk to us a little bit about a book that she has written regarding World War II. After her will be Leonard Dean, and then, we will have Betsy Shank and Yolanda Miller. So, in that order, if y'all will come on down, and we're anxious to hear what you have to share.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I have spent more than 30 years contemplating to write a book on my personal experiences of bombardment, homelessness and survival of World War II. My incarceration with 250,000 more immigrants and refugees in Denmark in a camp which Hitler had built secretly to train his S-3s. My return to Germany, and finally, my immigration to the United States of America. Many people, as well as teachers from schools where I spoke, encouraged me to present this book to you for consideration to be taught in our public schools to future generation. I'd like to give you each one, to give to you each one a copy of this book and trust you will consider to include this important subject, and perhaps the Cincinnati School Board can be the first school board in the United States to teach this very important subject to future generations. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And thank you for this book, and certainly, we will take it under consideration. I do know that there are high schools within the district that do a significant amount of Holocaust education, and it works very well as a learning process. So, we're anxious to read this, and thank you for sharing, and this is of great value to us.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Dean.
Come on, Mr. Dean. Down here.
Yeah.
How you doing, Leonard?
Hello, how everybody doing?
Hello.
First, I'm just here, as you know, I've worked with a lot of you all. I really want to talk about the discipline process. We have some parents with issues with the discipline process. What we would like to do is have it a little more parent-friendly, get it out there a little more, and just to kind of understand what's going on, because I've worked with the district, it's affecting African-American males, more so, we are an African-American district, heavy district. I know that we are concerned, because I've worked with Mr. Nelmes and everything, we're trying to get the Moore Program up and running and different things we have going on. So, I would just like us as a district to take the lead again, because I'm starting to read a whole lot about the school-to-prison pipeline, and I just want to make sure that's affecting African-American males more. I would just like to make sure, to see if the district, we can kind of come up with other ways. There are children who are being very frustrated. I'm just going to give a couple examples of me talking to children. One thing is A to S, they send them to A to S. I understand we have to have a place where you can go for discipline, but one child just told me, I'm going to get in trouble again, so I can go back over there, because he likes the structure of the day at A to S, which we need to change their mindset. So, we have to come up with something a little more positive, and parents are getting a little more frustrated with, and just giving up, because they're also trying to deal with the discipline issues, but they've been waiting to receive services through IEPs and different things like that, that they are saying just are taking forever to get through whatever the process is for IEP. So, I was just wondering if we, as a district, can come together and kind of take the lead. So, just like we did with the Moore Program, the Community Learning Centers, different things, Elementary Initiative, all of that stuff that made our district a good district, I would like to see us take a lead, because this is affecting African-American males, and they are starting to be very frustrated. This is just for me, talking to them here or there. They're starting to be frustrated, they don't believe that the district or the system believes in them. Every child's not bad, every child that gets in trouble, you, we have to, instead of just having a zero tolerance, this is this, that is that, it would be nice if we can deal with it on a child-by-child basis, because you can lose a child in the blink of an eye. If they're trying hard to change and make change, and the first thing that they do, you send them all the way back to the beginning like they've done nothing, and it's starting to affect a lot of young men, and that's just kind of causing a problem with the type of young men we're putting out into the community. So, I would just like to bring that to the board and the district to see if there's anything. I don't mind being on any committees or anything where we can put our heads together.
You read my mind, Mr. Dean. We do have a discipline committee or a positive behavior support committee, and we would love to have you on that committee. So, I would like to personally invite you to join us. Mr. Miles chairs the committee, so we will...
I talked to Mr. Miles.
Fabulous.
We already talked about that, but I just think a lot of it has to do with the mental health part and getting IEPs through, because a lot of parents are going through things, and they're just, they're just lost. They're frustrated, they don't know who to turn to, they don't know what questions to ask, they don't know what the process is, and it may take from, if I put in for this IEP, I might not get it for nine months. By then, that child has been suspended a couple times because of behavior issues, and they're giving up. And when parents give up, you lose the parent, you lose the child, we're losing children out of our district. So I would just like to see if there's something that we can do to change that fact.
Let me say it.
Mr. Nelms and then...
First of all, Leonard, thank you for spearheading this, and I just want to say thank you for being a proud graduate of this district. You can relate. That goes a long way.
Warner Hills.
Warner Hills. And then also, thank you for lending your sons, because you're a rare breed. Thank you for lending your sons to the district and always being an engaged and proud parent, and also thank you for assisting us to launch the Moore Program from beginning of the very pilot process you was there. I want to say, though, Leonard, the harvest is plenty, the labor's a few. Any idea that you have, there's people already in place that can assist you, I'm available, I work for you. So feel free, sometime we have to revisit a situation because times change, and so if you have a concern, and we need to maybe sit down along with Mr. Miles and look at how we need, we could take a refreshing approach to a situation that's becoming a nationwide epidemic and issue, then we need to do that. But we might need to expand the nets of support and involvement. So make sure you see Mr. Miles, you got my number.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dean, for coming today. I'm also familiar with how much you've worked with the district on several different initiatives, and your kids personally, and you have done a fantastic job of demonstrating how we need parental involvement in every aspect of our kids' school time. So as you probably know, I am very concerned about the district's oversight of what we call special services. Most recently, myself, along with Board Member Hoffman and Board Member Bates, have, began to do a deep dive into, I guess we would say, you know, procedures and then policies and that, in order for us to get a better understanding of our discipline, how kids are being disciplined, especially our IEP process and, you know, school safety, and even how these things are correlated long-term to our graduation rates, or not, or our African-American men becoming more statistics, whether that's through our A to E, A to S, or if that's a juvenile court, or what have you. So just so that you know, and we can maybe couple some of these things together, I don't know, but we are forming an ad hoc committee by which we will include the voice of the community, parents and that, but also folks who advocate and work with our kids, again to take a look at our procedures. You know, you have great policies, that's wonderful, but without, you know, true and consistent evaluation, ongoing evaluation, and really ensuring that the procedures are in place that fit the child, not a big global policy that really is set up for a lot of our kids to fail. It's a lot of work, echoing Board Member Nelms, so we need every, all hands on deck, I like to say. So please note that your board is very, and I say your board, we work for you, very concerned, and we have our eye on this discipline issue. It's very timely that you're here today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have Betsy Shank and Yolanda Miller.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ronan. I'm Betsy Shank, for those who don't know me. I would first like to say, for a point of reference, that I'm a retired teacher of Cincinnati Public Schools. I taught for 31 years proudly. The reason I'm here this evening is to thank the board for passing the resolution for the International Year of the Child, and also in support of Community Learning Centers. I think that as a community person, the Community Learning Centers are very important because of the fact that they are tailored to the community where that's, where that school is situated. As some of you, well, many of you know, I ran for school board in the 2013 election, and Community Learning Centers were so important that that was one of the tenants of my platform. And I ran with a slate of candidates, and that was also part of our platform. It's extremely effective. It is one strategy, or model, if you will, to give support to students to overcome the barriers of poverty, because we know that there are so many things that affect how kids learn and if they learn. So Community Learning Centers, I think, is bridging the gap for many of those things. So once again, thank you for your unanimous support.
Thank you, Betsy, for the work that you continue to do. And next, if we would have Yolanda Miller, come on down. How you doing?
Great. Good evening, school board, I'm Yolanda Miller. First time here to speak. I've been here on several occasions. I'm gonna kind of echo what Betsy said. Betsy said as far as the Community Learning Centers, come out to thank the districts for our Community Learning Centers, which we have gotten a lot of attention throughout the nation about the Community Learning Centers. And I want to say thank you, because when I was a kid in Cincinnati Public Schools, we didn't have all the opportunities. We didn't have the things that was bridging the gap from the community to the child. So I just want to commend you and say thank you, and for being concerned about the whole child. I had, I gotta say this, my sister-in-law works at a public school, Reese Price, and she came here from Atlanta. And I say, "Well, what's the Atlanta, Georgia?" So I say, "What's the difference between Atlanta School and Cincinnati Public?" And she said, "Well, we were down there, I was in a city school, and there was a lot of crime with prostitution and drugs and things like that." She said, "But here, it's a whole different world." She said, "It's mental health." She said, "We have three counselors in one school, and that's just amazing, and it just bottles my mind how, what causes all of that." So I want to say thank you for the Community Learning Centers to more parent, a parent of a CPS student.
Thank you all to all, to all of our speakers, and it really makes our work much easier, getting the guidance from all of you that you give to us. And now we move on to resolutions, which will recall, that will demand a roll-call votes, or treasurer pro teba is prepared and ready. Mrs. Bates, would you please present the resolution for board consideration that you have?
Yes, I'll go ahead and read it, because it's pretty self-explanatory, and it's also pretty short. It's a resolution for advanced payment of taxes. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the City of Cincinnati School District of Cincinnati, Ohio, Section 1, that the auditor and treasurer of Hamilton County, Ohio, are hereby requested respectively to draw and to pay to the treasurer of the Board of Education of the Cincinnati City School District upon written request of Diana C. Witt, treasurer CFO, or Teresa A. Johnson, Assistant Treasurer, in accordance with Section 321.34 ORC, money derived from taxes or other sources payable by law to the county treasurer to the account of the Board of Education of the Cincinnati City School District, and lawfully applicable for the purpose of any funds due in any settlement in 2015. Advanced monies received prior to July 1, 2015, are designated as revenues for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and are not available for appropriation for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, unless included in the five-year forecast. Section 2, that the treasurer of the Board of Education and the Cincinnati City School District shall forward to the county auditor a certified copy of this resolution. I present this resolution as printed. Redemption.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nelms. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye. Aye. I'm sorry.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Thank you very much. Mrs. Copeland-Dansby, would you please present the resolution that you have for consideration?
Certainly so. I have a resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2015-16 fiscal year, and I do present it as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates, Chairman of Finance. Any questions or comments that we can have, and we can refer to the superintendent to pass them on to the treasurer, if anyone has any? Hearing seeing none, let's vote.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons, aye. Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Superintendent Ronan, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. The recommendations for this evening's board nomination of a new cabinet-level position. So I'm really excited about these recommendations, because I believe they will advance some of the most important priorities of the district. So I am pleased to announce that Pat Neil Miller will move from Director of HR to this newly created cabinet-level position of family and community engagement. I know how important the board feels this is, and when you look nationally, many, many districts are creating a cabinet-level position to engage our parents and our community. So in her new role, Pat will oversee parent involvement, the Community Learning Centers, where we've gotten two great speakers talking about them, the Customer Help Center, and also the Parent Involvement Coordinator will move under Pat also. Pat has, I think we all know, Pat, you have wonderful relationship-building skills, and she is a CPS graduate, and her children attended CPS. So she already has deep, deep roots in our community. So I think that because of the ever-changing world, I think we certainly need to be on the ball, able to reach out and work with our community. So I am just so excited about that. This will also allow our Public Affairs Department to really get the good news out, and so thank you so much to Janet for the changes in your department. Also, there is one additional change in the HR department. Paul McDoll is being recommended to be promoted to the Interim Director. I know Paul has spent a lot of time working with the new teacher project, as we move our HR department forward. And also, Yanetta Harper, who's done a fabulous job with the teacher evaluation system, OTAS, CTAS, and all the mandates that are coming down from the state of Ohio, she's moving from the Office of Innovation into our HR department to increase capacity. So I think those are all of the changes here. In fact, there were so many, I had to write them down so I could remember them. But I hope the board will agree that this will certainly move the board in the right direction. So I want to thank my staff for being so flexible and willing to move into these new positions to move the district forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Thank you for your work, and thank you to all those that have embraced the change, and I think we're, the board is pleased. And we won't know until we vote, so let's get to that, if we can. All right, let's see, we have a motion for the revised, I need a motion for the revised recommendations of the superintendent. Motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so any questions about the recommendations? No questions about the report?
No, I was gonna say something, but I think it's apropos to say this, and I think, Mary, you made a wise decision with aligning your staff that have the skill set for appropriate position, but I want to say, the ones that I know, not only are they skilled and competent in areas, but they have good, I judge people by how they relate to people, and everybody you mentioned have good interpersonal relationships, not only that, good human relationships, and good people skills, and I think it kind of bodes well with their qualifications and they're forward to working with you, and...
I'll add, I'll add. Only add to that, that I think the exciting thing is the work, the groundwork that's been done by a number of people in getting us ready to actually have a department that is going to be focused on community engagement, involvement. I know this goes back three boards, and any number of folks that have had to pick up the responsibility to, to kind of nurture this and get it ready, and now I think it's going to come to full fruition. So all the folks, you know, all the folks that made that possible, I think that's, I think it's great, and I know where the board is going to be happy, because we're getting ready to vote right now. Uh-oh, got a comment? All right. He said I can go. Question on recommendations?
No, I want to echo what Board Member Nelms said, I'm glad you didn't have to go outside. I didn't understand that at first. I think you have an absolutely awesome administrative staff, and I'm really, really happy that the changes are being made, especially in the area, I keep looking over at Pat, because of the, the family and community engagement component. I think we all talked about, you know, other districts having a similar cabinet-level position and a whole, you know, unit of folks to really penetrate and become involved with our community and our parental involvement. It's so very important. So I stand ready to support you in your, in your new role.
Mr. Coons?
Kind of want to echo the same sentiments. It's very exciting that we have this new position, this new role, and I think some of the other reorganization will allow us to kind of reinvigorate ourselves as we tackle a new, new calendar year, not a new school year, but winter is a time of change as we prepare for everything that's coming, and I just again want to say that I think it's a good foresight on the superintendent's part to choose this new position and to make decisions based on people's strengths. That's what good operators do, so thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add to that as well, that, you know, I think we've been saying for a while now, I mean, they're simply superhumans, and so I think this is also just a smart realignment, so that they can really be spending their time, not just on executing, but on being more creative and, and putting all of their talents to play, because this is just such a talented group of people, and we are so lucky that they are dedicating themselves to the kids here in our district. They're, you know, everything that Board Member Nelms said to describe them, and I would just add to that, just so dedicated to our kids and families. And so I think we're just all so excited about this realignment, so that they can use their skills and their passion, and also just have the time freed up to put it into the right places. So thank you for the leadership, Superintendent Ronan, of doing this, and also to the, the great leadership here of folks who are willing to make those changes. Change isn't always easy, and so we want to recognize that and thank them for, for that.
I do think we have to recognize that over the time, over this last decade particularly, there have been significant cuts and changes, and people assuming more responsibilities and doing those superhuman things, and very frankly, it's time to, as the superintendent is leading us through this, to kind of reevaluate, re-envision what is the best way to, to serve our students and to make sure that the district leads the nation in having the most effective administrative and central office, and this is a giant step toward that. So appreciate it greatly, and I know the board's anxious to vote. Roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons, aye. Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer, and in the treasurer's absence, if we have any questions, we will...
I can answer.
Give them to Mr. Coons, who will be responsible for answering the treasurer's questions. You didn't know that that was part of it tonight, did you? Actually, what we are doing legally is that we will refer those questions to the superintendent to pass them on to the treasurer. Any questions or comments or messages that we need to share with the superintendent, and sometimes, very often, the superintendent can answer some of these questions as well? Okay. The revised report of the treasurer, let's, do I have a motion to accept revised report? Somebody make that motion?
I move.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we have no specific questions or comments to relay at this time. I'm sure also the treasurer would be more than happy if there's something that occurs to us later to, to ask, that would be fine. All right, let's roll call.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Coons, aye. Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Nelms?
Aye.
President Bolton?
Aye. Thank you all very much. And now we move on to the inquiries and updates this evening. We have a brief update from a member, Manera, regarding a committee that he's serving on, and you want to share with the board, and then I'll ask some questions about what I would like to inquire about.
Well, I don't know if it's much of an inquiry or update, and also an assignment, but with the growing concern of early childhood education and accessibility, I know that there's a lot of communities... I know that there's a lot of communities that are trying to figure out ideas on how to get this happening. And over at Roberts Academy, I know that there's a lot of ideas on how to put, kind of come up with a solution. And I know that some of the administration has been involved. So I would like to see if there's a possibility to have some sort of an update on those ideas. I know they're still in the planning process, but maybe at executive session in January to kind of cover some of the questions that are being addressed and maybe get some Board input so they can develop an idea or a solution to this issue that can be more concrete and have the right answers as they move along.
So we can make that part of the assignment session? And so we'll remember that that needed to be made. Mr. Coons?
I just wanted to clarify. Are you talking about just with Roberts or just with the district?
At the moment that I know of, there is some idea circulating around the Price Hill area neighborhood. But I would like the Board to kind of be included in that. So I'm asking that if we can have someone come and fill us in on what kind of ideas they're talking about and how the Board can understand what's happening and what kind of input we can give them to, to make sure that their ideas are going to be feasible and other obstacles that might...
Would it be a Cal presentation, maybe, where we can ask questions?
I would think maybe executive session. There might be some sensitivities to the planning, and we definitely don't want to...
We'd have to fit in one of those several categories.
Right.
If it can't, then a Cal would be good.
Yeah. Maybe if we can get an idea from maybe...
If it has to do with property or personnel.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll take that as an assignment? Okay. I have a question in Board Discussion Brief, as it may be, or not brief. We are scheduled for a community workshop next week and wanted to make sure, as we plan for that, to make sure what our hopes are regarding the outcome, the information. I know the Superintendent and staff have supplied us with a remarkable amount of information that will help us understand what we've done in the past, what we have under consideration now, and what we have available to us. So my question tonight is just to make sure that the Board, rather than me improperly phoning people as to what's the expectation, tell us a little bit and help the administration know what to anticipate regarding the community workshop. What do we hope to gain? What's our parameters? What spurred it? What have you? So that, yes, Mrs. Bates?
I kind of instigated this, so I can, I can at least give you what I think that, or direction that we're moving into. Now that the facilities master plan is completed, and now that we also have a policy of open enrollment and a resurgence of people moving into our city, we're finding the need to expand. So it's important that we not just have policies to distribute the seats that we have, but to develop a plan so that we can expand and develop new seats and programs, especially in high-demand program areas for our community. Take a look at the neighborhoods and see where, you know, where the population is and what we can anticipate in growth. So there's kind of short-term and long-term goals, looking at the possibilities of, you know, what seats are available so that we can perhaps offer more magnet seats in the near future than the far future. And then looking at a goal of accommodating the growth that's anticipated in the area with our services.
So I think it was to echo Melanie, I think it is how do we expand access to most in-demand schools, whether they're magnet or neighborhood? Because I think we also wanted to discuss those issues as well. We have current neighborhood schools that are beyond capacity, as well as looking at projections. So we can get, as Melanie, Board Member Bates, sorry, as Board Member Bates has been saying, so we can also get ahead of the problem and not be reactive, but seeing a year down the road, two years down the road, where are we going to see ourselves in an overcrowding position? And so I think the historical information is critical so that we know what has happened in the past. I think we're also want to know some about, you know, capacity of each building that we're at. How much can they hold? Where are we now? As well as projections, kind of all seen together. I think that would be important information for us to have going into that meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Bolton?
Two items, yes.
You mentioned information being shared with the Board. I may have overlooked it, but I didn't see anything in preparation for this meeting. Perhaps it was sent, I didn't see it. But I just think that the one thing, which I think you guys have both mentioned, which would be necessary for the community that's watching is a brief history of how we got to this point, you know? So just wanted to echo that.
Yeah, I think you said that, what we did see.
It's on SharePoint.
That the Administration has prepared for us to do a historical piece, plus a facilities overview, plus capacity and enrollment in each building. And there's some other things in it. I think that was uploaded last week to SharePoint. It's rather extensive. This Luddite, of course, wanted it in hard copy, just as it's easier for me. But it's quite extensive and very valuable. And I think the Administration also wants some guidance as to, at that community meeting, the community workshop, the nature of the presentation they need to make or the questions they need to be able to answer. But we're also seeking community input. So, you know, obviously a kickoff of kind of an overview. I know, to me too, is one of the things regarding new schools. Are there other ways to add to our portfolio? I mean, even within our existing facilities and the needs that a community may have or where we have overcrowdedness? So is there a way to begin to address that? So it, I think it's the opening salvo. But I know we didn't want to wait till the coming year. And I know it is a kind of a can of worms to start talking about some of this stuff. But I think the Board felt strongly about getting the community involved and even playing into the whole place regarding the commitment by some community members to expand quality seats within our geographic district, whether they're in our district or not. So there's a number of things, at least, to be discussed.
Well, President Bolton, would you like me to send? We did put together binders for all the Board members because I know when we loaded it on SharePoint, it was...
Huge.
Oh, we crashed it.
Yeah. Yes. So I think it might be easier. And we did try to divide it into sections. So I can send those over to the Board Office tomorrow.
And as long as Mrs. Bates doesn't get angry with us. And I wouldn't request... Listen how rude this is going to be.
As long as there aren't color copies in there.
Except of the maps with the dots.
I have to tell you, the very last few pages almost have to be color.
Yes.
Just don't color them for anybody else but me, but I need that colored piece. I do. I actually started to make a request of Joyce today.
It's the dots with the students. We have to do different colors.
There's some chart stuff there. But yes, Mr. Coons?
I want to reiterate that it sounds like there's a lot of information. And I think, again, to communicate to the public what, how we've gotten here, just like the table of contents of that binder or something, to just kind of get a brief timeline. I think that's where we need to start with this community meeting so people understand how we got to where we are.
Okay, yeah, so...
To prevent misunderstanding is the only point.
And it was my understanding that this was a board workshop. I mean, it's not that we don't want community input, but number one, we haven't done engagement to get community here.
It's been announced as a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, but we're not, you know...
Soliciting.
Right. Because we need to come up with a common vision before we move forward for input, I would think.
Okay, that clears up for me because I was a little confused and concerned that the public wasn't notified in enough advance or something like that.
I know what we didn't want to have it be listed as a retreat. And so the workshop is a public one to encourage people to come if they wanted to. But it isn't a public engagement kind of...
Okay. I wanted to be clear to make sure...
But that's, we didn't want to shut the community out since there is...
A part of the conversation.
Significant.
Yes. So can I say another couple of things to Superintendent? I haven't seen the information that you began to put together, but I just want to make sure that we can understand where there are capacity issues. And I guess maybe that's the dots and the maps and all that kind of thing. Okay. And two, I think I lost my train of thought. Okay, that's... I lost my thought. But yeah, just so that we're prepared with as much background information as we can...
We tried to put in all the reports that the previous Boards had solicited from various groups, the surveys we did with parents, their input from over the years, capacity charts, maps of where all the children are. So we've tried to put that, just so everyone has a similar background. Because Melanie, you're probably the only one who's been around since the very beginning. So we knew this was crucial, in fact. Because in fact, I reread it so that I could refresh my mind about how all of this played out. So it is a binder. We do have a table of contents, which I think helps, history, background, just everything. I mean, just our whole magnet process, going back to Judge Rice's decision around DSEG from 40 years ago. I mean, this goes way, way back.
Okay. And two, can we include in that information where all of our buildings are? You know, if there are some spaces that belong to us, but maybe we're not using them more and used for other purposes.
We'll put that in.
I think the Board members will be very impressed with the, how extensive is this effort? And I do think in this case, fasten your seatbelt, hard copy does help on this one.
This might be in there because I did not, I didn't have the time to go through every single piece yet. But Board Member Copeland-Dansby, that piece of where do we actually have land was one of the things I was curious to look at. And then the other one, at one point, Superintendent Ronan provided to the Student Achievement Committee information on the demographics and report cards for Fairview pre and post-Supreme Court decision about, you know, not being able to use race to balance schools. And I think that was really interesting information. We were looking at a very similar question because that comes up quite often when we talk about the best ways to enroll kids in magnet programs. And so since that, we already have that information. If we could include that in the binder as well so that the rest, the folks not on student achievement, also have that.
I just want to say that this is a very timely conversation. We've had the backlash of overcrowding, overcapacity, and magnet enrollment process for a very long time. And being a parent who, I don't know, what, 10 years ago slept outside? I mean, folks are still sleeping outside, you know? So I think this is a very timely conversation. And we owe it to the community to come up with some relief and to think strategically, long-term, as it relates to especially the overcrowding and the appropriate land use.
And I would add too, the expansion of the portfolio, as it is needed. And it's so critical that we have the history and we have the options. And we didn't just start worrying about this, but this has been a concern. And what a great problem to have. Rather than sit here and figure out how to wither away, it's a much better problem to have as to how can we respond to the demand to come to our schools? So that's the beginning. And I do emphasize that the community workshop is only to make sure that the community knows they're invited. This is for us to do it in public. Yes, Mr. Coons?
I just want to make it clear, I prefer a digital copy, not a printed one.
It is on SharePoint right now. Can you find it?
I'm looking in the Board's Community Workshop and it says it's empty. But I'm looking that up.
I'll make sure Joyce gets it to you in the morning then. I don't know where she put it.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the insistence on the timeline thing. I thought it was more of a community engagement type of meeting that we were having. But I guess it's, it's just...
It's whenever we list retreats, nobody shows up, and that's fine. But this is, we want to do some of this work in public. And there'll be lots of times that we're going to have to go to the public to get some guidance.
Yeah. I was expecting a lot of people would be here for this, especially...
It might be.
Well, we want to get to the point, at some point, and I'm going to keep saying this, where the community is at the table.
Yeah.
Exactly. The decisions are being made. And if this is just a preliminary conversation amongst Administration and the Board, that's great. But as we move forward, we have to make sure the community is at the table, in droves.
Yep. And I think, too, we invited our Policy Fellow to come to this because we know this is, we've asked that this be his big project to take on. And so I think one of the, one of the many things that we will be asking of him is to help us figure out what is our actual plan. Take, take all of this brainstorming, all of these questions, all of these key concerns, and get them into some workable format for us so that we can plan ahead, get the community involved in the conversation, figure out which committees are going to take things on, and help us move this forward in a really well-planned-out way. So thankfully, we have him helping us as well.
And I do think the Board will be impressed with the materials that the Administration has put together for us. And I know we'll do our homework and come prepared. And that'll help us expedite whatever we need to get to. So, yes, sir?